Good evening, everyone. I would like to note that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Haverick Pop Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the always team administrator offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school and district. Go.
Mrs. Camerini?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mrs. Minnies?
Here.
Mr. Toll?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
And I need a motion for executive session for Madison related to hit and personnel. So, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abolish? Attention. See you all. Good evening, everyone. I would like to note that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Haverick Pop Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Township Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the always team administrator offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school and district. Go. Mrs. Camerini?
Here.
Mrs. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Here.
Mr. Heffernan?
Here.
Mrs. Minnies?
Here.
Mr. Toll?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Here.
Mr. Capone?
Here.
Ms. Allen? Mr. Rowan. Please stand up. Question. Hey, we want those students here tonight, they're basically involved. We'll be on red. All right, here. Head of the Pride, High School North student staff, worth of recognition already celebrates outstanding academic achievements, and highlights individuals who uphold the core values of our community. Marches of World Versity is for the ninth grade, eighth grade, and third grade, and sarlent. For the tenth grade, Gina Harris and Justin O'Feely. For the eleventh grade, Pedro, Mello, Belindo, and Bea and Benji. For the twelfth grade, Matthew Ruffo and Aaron Saps. The staff member of the month was Tara Moore. Two relay teams still record yourself in the boys track this for so far this spring. These are the sprint men team of Richie Walton, Jack Bywell, C.D. Stintford, and Trey Earths. And the distance team of Bena Maro, Thomas Randolph, and Brian Doran. High School North's dancing with the faculty challenge returned to campus on Thursday, April 20th. It featured choreographed acts with our honors dances alongside teachers, participating faculty members included Mr. McGee, Miss Walton, and Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Richelieu, and Miss Tany. And the winning act consisted of the teachers, Mrs. Sarpeau, Mrs. Cassidy, Mrs. Pearl, Mrs. Beth Beijing, and Mrs. Justin. Overall, it was a fantastic event that observed outstanding collaboration with students and faculty. Arts fusion, comprehensive showcase of digital student art or program for fine arts, applied arts, graphic design, culinary arts, and so fashion is currently in display in our meets. The public is welcome to enjoy our unique and exceptional products on Wednesday, April 26th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Freshen academy awards are distributed at the conclusion of each part period to honor students who serve as best students and model the following essential qualities: resilience, persistence, valor, diligence, honesty, and teamwork. These will be presented and distributed during the regular assembly Friday, April 28th, in our total. High School North's filmmakers continue to develop impressive products, tap into career jobs, short film, Fiatse recently screened at this Count Basie Student Film Festival, and Jessica Non earned the best first-time director of the show in the Hall of Fame. Our faculty and administrative team continues to identify students' most strong personal character while exemplifying the standard excellence excellence that serves as our learning community's foundation. These individuals are issued with praise points, which are medals that celebrate their positive example across the campus. This wants to commemorate his work, Dylan Sanchez, Lea Fieldman, Chris Arcevereno, Julie Frontera, Adrian Mosoto, Gianna Arsugretti, Alice Oviano, Natalie Trezzo, Alex Horns, and Brianna Soto. The excitement of signing co-curricular activities has been one of the screenings by. This year, several organizations were graded into student leadership and faculty support. These two clubs include North Side's Pickleball Club, Orgay Club, Creative Writing, Batman, Kindness, and Poachy. Our community leaders organized and facilitated a three-on-three basketball tournament that drew upon the excitement of the NCAA or Chinese action. They included a grade-level bracket and a competitive championship round. The overall winners of faculty team consisting of Mr. Calvin, Mr. Correll, and Mr. Carter. Students from various history courses to Central Europe Washington, D.C. This tour nation's tack will include visiting all monuments and memorials along National Mall at Arlington, Arlington National Cemetery, the Museum of National History, Darren Space Museum, and the Hawkins Museum. It was a profoundly educational and unforgettable experience. Jack Crass was awarded the Hamilton County Guides Directors Association's Karen Award for his noteworthy leadership in community service. Grace Gomez was selected to represent High School North at the National Girls' and Women in Sports Day celebration for her leadership in the building by athletics teams. Mrs. Beth Lyne was awarded Paul Shore Band Director of the Year, who we are genuinely grateful for her positive contributions throughout school community. The Orgay Club organized a checkers competition. Today, lunch lot for all grades, and the top three finishers were in third place Richie Joubowski, in second place Avery Mattis, and in first place James Larnier. Mr. Olson is currently, there's also currently a tetris game tournament running during lunch session, participation in the competitions so far, he says, can I say? Thank you very much. Thank you, lady. Next up, our high school south, Tessa C. Lee.
First ever staff and student formal agreement concluded with Mr. Ian Michelson Ella defeating Mr. Rosenblow and Luigi Savile in finals. Seventeen teams consisting of one staff member and one student competed in a long tournament, culminating in an exciting final day of luck. Spring's Ford Spark both led with over 400 students by competing in spring's Ford. The softball team competed in the tournament during spring break in Florida, playing teams from all over the country. The boys tennis team recently went to zero at the softball invitational, defeating Millville High School and Bythe High School. The baseball team participated in the autism awareness challenge, North Brunswick Community Park this past weekend, defeating the 15th ranked team in the state, ran it off by a score of 11 to 1. The boys golf team came in second place as the team at the Sarahville August Classic, with junior Dan Cassidy winning the individual tournament with a score of 7. The team also defeated CBA in a dual match for the first time in 20 years. The girls' boys lacrosse teams, boys volleyball team, and girls' boys track teams are all also off to an excellent start. Six films from Middletown South were selected as finalists for the Count Basie Team College Film Festival at the Count Basie Theater in Red Bank. South has the largest amount of films selected from all schools. The award ceremony in spring will take place on April 29th at Basie. Congratulations to Mark Collins, Zoe Ness, Isabella Champion, and Maggie Rodeaus. Their film MM61 took only award for best cinematography at this year's Kent Place School Film Festival in seven years. Additionally, their film took second place in the experimental category at this year's Film Act Festival in Amwood, which may now include a tent. Six films from Mid-South were screened at the Natsack Library on Saturday, April 15th. The event allowed the community to see a raw cross-section that we contemplated at South, and provided them an opportunity to ask questions related to the production process. Congrats to the girls' track field team as they became the eight northern divisional champions last week in Howard. The girls were led to their win by individual divisional wins by all four hundred girls, Abby Michelson in the 400, Rosie Shea in the 400, and two mild, Jenna Schuster in the 800, Katie, Simone Era in the pole vault, and Maddie Hussy in the shot club in the space. Congrats, girls, on an amazing start to the competitive season. The high school south community commemorated the GLSD Day of Silence on April 14th. The Day of Silence is a national student love demonstration where LGBTQIA+ students and their allies choose to take a vow of silence, or maybe showing up supportive in another way to bring awareness to the harmful effects of harassment, intimidation, and bullying of the LGBTQIA+ people worldwide. While we are not the makers of our official date for seniors today, we established a new placement just late in schedule with the turn theater with our community-wise celebration. To this end, students have been asked to wear post-secondary college or military wear clothing on April 14th. South's year program is scheduled to take place on Friday, April 28th. Looking forward to having a safe and happy celebration. Lastly, South's community and community continues to be a success, and we've been celebrating staff and students each month for being positive and active in this.
Thank you, Mrs. Darby. Now, I'm going to turn the mic over to Mrs. Darby to present the final 23-24 school budget.
Thank you. We did have a presentation on the final budget that is up on the website. Just to give an overview, we did present the tentative budget that our march meeting, the budget that we are looking to present for adoption tonight, is unchanged from the tentative budget with one exception that we will get into when we go through the slides. So, I'm just waiting for the tentative slides. So, in the presentation, the post-play is all, so our presentation is about, is our budgeted revenue. And you'll see that the revenue here remains unchanged from what was presented with our tentative budget. It proposes a tax level increase of 2% and reflects the stating and other sources of revenue that may anticipate for next year's budget. The change in our revenue is highlighted on the line that says use of block balance. And we can get to this a little bit later, but it has to do with the district applying for supplemental stabilization aid that is being issued this year from the state of districts who are losing state aid with the S2 legislation, where we've been losing state aid over a seven-year period. And certain amount of, two-thirds of all the aid that was taken from districts this year was being stated back to the districts if they apply and show a reason or how we want to use the aid. So, we have a slide on that later. But that's the only change to the revenue is by the way, anticipating our allocation of $217,769. The next two slides show our budgeted expenses again, the changes from our tentative budget are in the green and blue color. There are two line items that are affected in our budget as a result of this increase. One is under regular programs instruction. And we go to the next slide. The other one is employee benefits, and that's because the stabilization aid that we are using in next year's budget is going to be allocated to three positions that we will explain in a couple of slides. Slide just reviews our tax levy increases over the past several years. Again, same information presented with our tentative budget, but it shows the ups and downs, and that's been generally around at 2% where the state is allowing students to use the tax levy. This slide explains our bank cap. We do have some tax levy capacity that's available to us to use in future budgets. If need be, we are not using any of this bank cap in this year's budget, but this slide details what is available in the district needed for a future budget over the next three years. This slide illustrates our state aid trend, starting from the 9-10 year, to the 11 year, where we had an initial severe cut of state aid. State aid at that time went from a little over $20 million down to about the $12,000, $13,000. We did experience increases over the following years, but now you can see the line is trending downward into the S2 legislation, where we had state aid used over the past several years. So, the supplemental stabilization aid is the change to this budget. Again, we got an application that we could apply for, the approval to apply for is on this agenda. The maximum amount would be entitled to is $217,769. The district is going to use those funds to preserve two instructional intervention positions at the high school level that were previously being funded with ESSR money that has, that's not being continued, that we exhausted. So, those will be reinstated back into the budget. And in addition, we are adding instructional interventions in the elementary school into the budget for next year. So, those three positions plus the benefits related to them, well, we are using the $217,000 for. The slide shows our reserves. We don't have a lot of money reserves, like a small capital reserve, maintenance reserve to use if we need to for budgeted expenses after projects. This details our capital allocation that is planned for next year. Again, these projects are unchanged from what we presented in the tentative budget. We also have a separate budget and tax levy for debt service. Those are the bonds that have been issued by the district through the preparatory process. During that process, the community commits to raising the, meaning the taxes to pay bond agency here, along with the state aid, yet make those payments. So, our debt service credit for this year totals $6,483,705,000, being supported by tax levy and state aid. When we take our debt service and general budget tax levy, and look at the impact on the average assessed home here in Middletown, that's what this slide presents. An average of value assessed home here in Middletown for the current year is $592,700, and it's an increase over the previous year. So, we're looking at the impact of this proposed budget on our, from the operating side, a made annual change to $130.12. And on the debt service side, $1.07,000, for a total increase on average assessed value of home annually of $131.82. We participate in a number of shared services, some of the townships, some of the county. We participate in a variety of purchasing cooperatives and transportation arrangements with other districts to share costs on some of our out-of-district routes. Our budget timeline, we've been actually working on the budget since the early call. We get through that whole process and come to the point where the board adopted the tentative budget back in March. At that time, the budget was submitted to the county office of the New Jersey Department of Education. It was reviewed. That office approved it. At that point, we were allowed to advertise in the newspaper, which we did, appeared in the Haverick Pop Press on April 14th. And we are here tonight to have our public hearing on our budget and for the board to adopt the final budget for the 23-24 year. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Darby. Now, with my over for any opening public comment on the budget. I want to say a public comment on the budget.
Hi, I'm Erica Casey, and I'm here in Arlington. I just had a question about the slides. You said you were adding to instructional interventionists. You said that elementary level, but the slides at high school.
No, we're retaining two at high school that were funded by ESSR funds. We're retaining those in next year's budget, and we're adding an elementary element intervention position that was not funded by ESSR funds, but is being added using the stabilization aid. So, it's a total three positions, two high school, one elementary.
Anyone else wish to make a comment? No, please, sorry. Say your name and address the record, please. Name and address the record.
My name is Joey Patrino, of the Soane.
Oh, sorry, this is just a public comment on the budget.
Public comment?
Yeah. Still, we need time later on for further comment. For the public comment, I need a motion to approve the final budget under the resolutions of the 23-24 school year. Amy Orville, please.
Mrs. Camerini?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, excuse me.
I just want to say, and I just said last, the last meeting, I'm not supporting any more supervisors moving up. I'm sure there's no money change. I don't think we need two more supervisors. Any more people down in elementary to help out? Maybe a suggestion going forward is that maybe we start looking to reduce class sizes to alleviate what's going on in the elementary classes. I know it's expensive, but maybe that's a start, a way that we need to start looking at.
Thank you, Mrs. Darby. Comment? Okay, we're starting. Go. Next up, our high school south, Tessa C. Lee.
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
No.
Mr. Heffernan?
No.
Mrs. Minnies?
Yes, but my comments go back.
Mr. Toll?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have to committee everyone's curriculum instruction. Mrs. Farley, Mr. South.
Yes, we did meet this month. It was a pretty light agenda, because we're running to next month, but we definitely have to review and prove. So, nothing really to share with the committee.
Next up, our student service and Mr. Toll.
Yes, we also met on the 18th. It was an informative meeting, the highlight of which was Mr. Dorgan and his growth, I don't know if I pronounced that right, gave us a great presentation on the district's Miles program, which is the adult transition program for 18 and 21-year-old students. It really was eye-opening about the opportunities for really great work, education, and practical life skills training that these students get beyond what they learned in grade time as well, so we appreciated that. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Kevin? There's a lot of talk about changes in special ed services next year, especially resource room. Could you fill me in on what those changes are?
Joan, I'm sorry.
I said there's a lot of discussion, now as one to the community, about changes in the special ed section next year about resource room. Could you explain to me what those changes are?
I'm not aware of the specific changes, and what in particular was that you heard?
I'm hearing that the way they need to resource room is going to be changed next year, and there's been meetings held about it already, so I'm just curious what it is.
I haven't, but I would ask if this alone has anything on that subject?
Yeah, there is no, we are obligated by law to have the continuing services related to special education. So, we are running able to continue local services across the district. The threshold is we identify students that need special education services, and that is dependent on the student's condition of environment, of their listening. So, we're strictly for one child and resource placement may not be least restricted for another child in another setting. But we are obligated by law to have a continuing service that we will continue.
And we're not slowing down that process of students getting into our resource room lately.
No, we are, we are still asking for evidence to support that place.
Cut it.
Thank you. Thanks. We'll be on to facilities and finance, Mr. Darby.
The finances and facilities committee met on April 19th. We did go over items that are appearing on the agenda in addition to the budget that we just reviewed. We also, under facilities, the board will be gosying on the approval of permanent construction and utility east agreement with the county of mama, this is to facilitate improvements in the intersection of Leonardville and East Road, and involves a small section of the property of baby elementary school. It will not impact the operations of the school, and it will allow, they are actually going to be rebuilding the sidewalk and putting some curb damage to be beneficial to our property. So, there is an agreement to finalize that on the agenda. Mr. Nassar, the director of facilities, reviewed updated custodial procedures for the committee, including the use of air quality monitoring devices, documentation of conditions found in the school. So, we are continuing to evolve those procedures and make them more efficient and effective. Under finance, again, we voted, the board voted on the 23-24 budget. We also have on the agenda the supplemental stabilization aid application that we talked about, we talked about the budget, the board just has to approve our application for those funds. We also have a few contracts on the agenda for renewal for next year that are also included in the budget. We have our contract with the Effective Schools Solutions, which is a contract for services, clinicians for mental health and behavioral, and also professional development for staff. So, we will be continuing all the services that we currently have in place now, we add into those this year, and those can incorporate into next year's budget. We also have a renewal for the YMCA, the foreign and aftercare, and all that is on the agenda. And that is under a proposal that was submitted a few years ago at YMCA, and we're able to renew it under those terms. We have a board for our food service management company, contract. We did go out for proposals this year. So, the contract is being awarded to Winston's Nutrition, that's our current food service management company. And that will be for next year, and there are four optional renewals. We are also renewing a contract with Educational Staff Services for the supply of substitutes for the district, and that is again, per proposal we received a few years ago, that this will be renewed. We also have a contract on the agenda for school pictures in New York toward the high school level with the boards. We have had a lot of discussion about laws, and we've gotten some feedback through a survey on some of the things that parents who wish to have addressed, and we've shared those, had conversations with the boards, and they've committed to addressing those concerns, and also doing their own survey of parents to get even more direct feedback to maybe services better next year. I do just want to remind everybody that this is a service that's provided by the district that the parents can elect to use. So, we hope that everyone understands that they have their choice of photo packages, and they also, if they choose not to use the school contract, they have the ability to do that also. We are, we do strive to have the best product that we, that the boards can provide, and we are going to continue to do that. We also talked about a few other things that we informed with the committee that happily we were afforded the local park based improvement grant that we applied for to renovate the harmony on every school playground. We did apply $100,000, we were awarded $69,000, and we are going to be using those funds to renovate the playground there over at Harmony, with some funds that are included in our local budget. We also talked to the committee about our plans to apply for another cost security grant, the school violence protection program grant. We did receive a grant last year, and actually, it was pretty sizable, we received a grant of almost half the.
Now, we're retaining two high schools that were funded by Estor funds. We're retaining those and next year's budget and we're adding an elementary element into this position that was not funded by Estor funds but is being added using the stabilization aid. So it's a total of three positions, two high school, one elementary.
Anything else wish to make a comment? No, please. Say your name and address the record, please. Name and address the record.
My name is Joey Fratello. I'm Mr. Sodi.
Oh, sorry, this is just a public comment on the budget.
Public budget?
Yeah. Till we time later on for further comment. For the public comment, I need a motion to approve the final budget under the resolutions of twenty-three, twenty-four. Amy Orville, please.
Mrs. Kennedy?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Kennedy.
I just want to say in our last meeting, I'm not supporting any more supervisors moving up. I'm sure there's no money change. I don't think we need two more supervisors. Any more people down in elementary to help out? Any suggestions going forward? Is that maybe we start looking to reduce class sizes to alleviate what's going on in the elementary classes? I know it's expensive, but maybe that's a start, a way that we can discuss.
Amy Orville, comment? Okay, we're starting.
Mrs. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
No.
Mr. Heffernan?
No.
Mrs. Benwies?
Yes, but my comments go back.
Mr. Toll?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tabago?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Okay, we'll have to committee everyone's curriculum instruction. Mrs. Farley, Mr. Stappel.
Yes, we did meet this month. It was a pretty light agenda because we're running to next month, but we definitely have to review and prove. So now we really do have to share with everybody.
We'll have to students services and Mr. Toll.
Yes, we also met on the eighteenth. There was an informative meeting in the highlight which was Mr. Dorgan and his growth with, I don't know how to pronounce that right, gave us a great presentation on the district's Miles program, which is the adult transition program for eighteen and twenty-one year olds. It really was eye opening about the opportunities for really great work, education, and practical life skills training that these students get beyond what they learned in grade time as well, so we appreciated that.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Kevin? There's a lot of talk about changes in special ed services next year, especially resource room. Could you fill me in on what those changes are?
Joan, I'm sorry.
I said there's a lot of discussion, now as well to the community, about changes in the special ed section next year about resource room. Could you explain to me what those changes are?
I'm not aware of the specific changes. In what particular was that here?
I'm hearing that the way they need to resource room is something that changed next year and there's been meetings held about it already, so I'm just curious what it is.
I haven't, I would ask if this alone has anything on that subject?
Yeah, there is no, we are obligated by law to have the continuing services related to special education. So we are running able to continue local services across the district. The threshold is we identify students that need special education services and that is dependent on the student's environment and resource room environment as well as so. So, this is restricted for one child and resource placement may not be resource restricted for another child in another setting. But we are obligated by law to have a continuing service.
And we're not slowing down that process of students getting into our resource room like it's needed?
No, we are still asking for evidence to support that place.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll have to facilities, finance, Mr. Darty.
The finances and facilities committee met on April nineteenth. We did go over items that are carrying on the agenda in addition to the budget that we just reviewed. We also under facilities, the board will be voting on the approval of permanent construction and utility, East agreement with the county of Manta. This is to facilitate improvements at the intersection of Leonardville and East Road and involves a small section of the property at Baby Elementary School. It will not impact the operations of the school and it will allow, they are actually going to be rebuilding the sidewalk and putting some permaculture to be beneficial to our property. So there is an agreement to finalize that on the agenda. Mr. Nassar, the director of facilities reviewed updated custodial procedures for the committee, including the use of air quality monitoring devices and documentation of conditions found in the school. So we are continuing to evolve those procedures and make them more efficient and effective. Under finance, again, we voted, the board voted on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. We also have on the agenda the supplemental stabilization aid application that we talked about, we talked about the budget, the board just has to approve our application for those funds. We also have a few contracts on the agenda for renewal for next year that are also included in the budget. We have our contract with the Effective Schools Solutions, which is a contract for services, clinicians for mental health and behavioral and also professional development staff. So we will be continuing all the services that we currently have in place now, we add into those this year and those can incorporate into next year's budget. We also have a renewal for the YMCA, the foreign and after care, you know, that is on the agenda. And that is under a proposal that was submitted a few years ago at YMCA, we're able to renew it under those terms. We have a award for food service management company contract. We did go out for proposals this year, so the contract is being awarded to Winston's Nutrition, that's our current food service management company. And that will be for next year and there are four optional renewals. We are also renewing a contract with educational staff and services for the supply of substitutes for the district and that is again per proposal we received a few years ago that this will be renewed. We also have a contract on the agenda for school pictures in New York toward the high school level with the boards. We have had a lot of discussion about laws and we've gotten some feedback through a survey on some of the things that parents who wish to have addressed and we've shared those and had conversations with the boards and they've committed to addressing those concerns and also doing their own survey of parents to get even more direct feedback to maybe services better next year. I do just want to remind everybody that this is a service that's provided by the district that the parents can elect to use. So we hope that everyone understands that if they have their choice of photo packages and they also, if they choose not to use the school contract, they have the ability to do that also. We do strive to have the best product that the boards can provide and we are going to continue to do that. We also talked about a few other things that we informed with the committee that happily we were afforded the local recreation improvement grant that we applied for to renovate the harmony elementary school playground. We did apply around two thousand dollars, we were awarded sixty-nine thousand dollars and we are going to be using those funds to renovate the playground there over at Harmony with some funds that are included in our local budget. We also talked to the committee about our plans to apply for another cost security grant, the school violence protection program grant. We did receive a grant last year and actually it was pretty sizable, we received a grant of almost a half a million dollars to fund redoing access controls throughout the districts and we'll have a project that will be ongoing. We have been told it's difficult to get the grant two years in a row because it is not competitive, but we can feel that we have some ideas to submit that would be strong candidates for funding, so we are going to try, but again, we have been told it may not be successful, but we are going to try to get those funds again. And that was, I conclude our meeting.
Any other few questions? Could you please tell the community why they have chosen Harmony to that playground? Because there's stipulations for that.
Sure, so that's a good point. This grant, the local recreation improvement grant, is, they are looking for projects that will impact the community as a whole and we felt that this, that particular playground was a great candidate because of its location next to the community athletic fields that are at Harmony and Harmony. And it's not only used by the children who attend those schools, but it's used by children from all over the town when they come and play on this field. So we thought that that would be a strong contender because it is a very competitive grant to be able to make a case for a big impact on the community. So that's, and to be honest, the playground equipment is aging and it does need to be replaced, so that's part of it as well. But the location of the playground, we thought made it a good contender and I think we were right since we did get the grant.
The other question is could you please update our conversation on the bus route protocol? Because we did discuss that in committee.
We discussed, so we've been discussing over the past couple of months. We had busing that is currently in place for students who formerly attended Port Manta School that removed to New Manta School. That area of Port Manta, you know, that would be not eligible for busing under the policy and the regulations from the state, which state that if a student is more than two miles from home from the school, they're eligible based on mileage, but we have a number of students who don't qualify based on mileage. And when Port Manta School was closed a few years ago, there was a temporary accommodation being to provide transportation for the students who live in that area. So we talked about reviewing that accommodation and letters were sent out to the families because we've done the busing now for a few years and that we would be looking to discontinue the busing next year for the families who don't qualify based on mileage. We have heard concerns from the parents and we had been discussing that as an administrative team and in our facilities and finance committee. We've tried to look at different options that people have suggested. Some, we've had parents come to the board meeting here and say, you know, I can see Harmony, you know, I have rights to walk Harmony, to Manta. We've looked at this from all different angles. Unfortunately, without doing a wider range, redistorting or redrawing lines of the elementary schools, including pocket moves of students to our schools, we'd be too disruptive. So at this point, we are evaluating whether we can continue the busing for longer here and take another year to see what other alternatives may be available or how we could solve this issue going forward. There wouldn't be any item on the agenda for that this evening. The only way this will show up on the agenda is when we renew our transportation routes, our contracts next year. We have new bids on the agenda for this month, but our renewals won't happen until next month. So when we put the renewals on the agenda for next month, the board will decide whether that route can be renewed with the rest of the rest of the year. So I hope that's understandable to everybody by the time of this point, but it's a difficult situation and we have to try to figure out a long-term solution.
You want to bid?
Yes, sir.
We'll have to shared services, Mr. Darty.
So our shared services representatives met with the township representatives for shared services on April eighteenth and just a few topics were discussed, mostly focused on facilities, particularly outside facilities. We had had an issue over the past month with some of the field lighting at the High School South baseball field. For those who may not be familiar with the history of that, those lights were installed by the township to light the baseball field over the High School South. In return, we do allow them to issue some permits for the use of that field, but it does benefit us to have lights there. The township has arranged for repairs and everything has been taken care of at this point. We've also had an ongoing discussion about the fields at Baby School. They are heavily used by community groups and they are, they are in need of improvement. So we are discussing with the township ways that we can possibly improve the condition of those fields. I know the subject of irrigation was discussed, perhaps trying to find a way to install irrigation to allow the grass to grow back over there, but really the issue is heavy use and without a way to, we need to find a way to rest those fields at some point so that they can use themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Darty. We'll go to policy, Mr. Fratello.
Good evening. The policy committee held its last meeting on April eighteenth. Tonight on the agenda, you will find that there is a policy and a regulation that are both being abolished. There are nine policies that are on the agenda for a first read. There is a policy that's going to be adopted tonight, second read, and there are four regulations that are on the agenda as well for an option. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Now, we have the microphone for a public comment on gender payments only. We have a comment maker, gender handled.
Good evening. Hi, so last time. I should have questions. Number one.
I'm sorry, can you just speak to me?
Oh, I'm just trying to. That's why I'll make the end of it. Mallory, was that?
My name is Danny.
Your last name, I can see if you might, is that it?
Darty.
Darty, okay. My name is Victoria Givena, big Givena, however you want to pronounce it, just your address, I'm sorry. Thirty-two meals in four months. I just have a quick question. Are you guys done with the actually voting in the budget already? I can see everybody voting in. Is everybody in on that? Right. It's final already? Done. Shocking how fast two hundred fifty-seven thousand was delegated to a job that, not the script. I don't even know what these people are going to be doing.
It's actually three positions, not one.
Okay. What are these people actually doing? Two hundred fifty-six thousand, three D. Is that pretty close to what we just stated? This moved so quickly, I'm actually shocked. You guys are operating on a business. I want you to succeed. I want you guys to succeed. We're actually, I was sitting outside, I found out that you're doing this for free. None of you guys are even paying for what you're doing? I'm actually impressed, actually. And that is why I want you guys to actually succeed at what you're doing. If you're actually volunteering for this, I'm impressed. I'm just a little bit in shock at how fast the money was just like, just evaporating without really, and just how fast the motion went down without actually explaining what these people are going to be doing. And I'm just giving the personal example, my daughter goes to New Manta. She recently stated that she has four teachers. I would like to know what these four teachers are doing for a class of nineteen or twenty students. Do we need four teachers for twenty students? One other question, and I know you guys are handling the budget and I hope and I pray that we could possibly recalibrate this or even hold off on this final vote. With, I've been on the screen, oh, then this happened so quickly, I was actually a little bit in shock, nobody even stood up to say anything. But the finals was going to May what? What's the deadline for the actual final agreement? Can somebody answer that? It was on the screen before.
The timeline that was included on the last slide was statutory allowing for the dates that you could hold your public hearing. So the dates were April twenty-four through, it was May first through second.
Okay.
So being that this is April twenty-fifth, we are within that timeline.
Great. Now, I would like to know, I picked one school, picked one of the, a lot of the schools you guys have in this district. I would like to know on a spreadsheet just what each person does, how long they've been there, how much they get paid, and what exactly their job is. And perhaps you can just analyze one of those schools and see how, how much you waste of this thing for you to identify some of the things where you know, look, I have a lot of experience actually restructuring companies. I would like to help you if I can. If you guys are volunteering, I want to volunteer. I want to help you do that. I want to set an example, I want you guys to set an example, I think we do better. I was a little bit shocked at how fast that money was delegated without, I don't even know what these people are going to be doing. I know that this job is very concurrent, you said a question, some of the money was being used from sort of a grant to pay them before or something, is that what you said? The money was coming from a grant or something, or where was the money coming from for these positions that we're not paying for?
Sir, generally, this is not a back and forth for the board against interrogating.
I have a, can I mention that? More.
Usually it's just time for a public comment. I know it might not have been at previous meetings, but there was a budget presentation at the last meeting, preparation of the budget is a year-long process, there's finance committee meetings throughout the year, so your impression that this all happens in one minute might not understand the whole process. So I just want to make sure you understand that this is not just something that happens fluidly in a meeting, that there was a budget presentation tonight, there was a budget presentation at the last meeting, there's finance committees throughout the year, and this authority works on the budget all year long.
Okay. I'm sorry for signaling out the authority over there. That's probably, that's why I'm just going in the wrong direction. I was at the last meeting. You guys brought in some things that, some letters, numbers, I didn't want that box. Some of the people would like to know a little bit more information and I had a problem and said, oh, you can look it up on the website.
No, no, sir, I won't say that at all, but actually was a public comment on the budget, both at the last meeting and this meeting, that would have been the time to ask the question.
Okay. So let me ask you a question. Because that time has passed, as already this has been chiseled in the stone, can changes be made?
I'll leave that question to the authority.
You're welcome, you're welcome to ask questions about the budget now, since you missed the previous time, but if you have questions about the budget, you're free to ask.
I honestly think that the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand is going to be allocated for better transportation for the kids. That's just my opinion. I mean, you know, I would just like to know what these people are going to be doing for that two hundred and fifty-six thousand, what I've got was on the screen before. What is their exact job? Why are we sending so much money for the repositions? Can somebody answer that, or is this something that happens at another meeting?
So we can't discuss personnel issues, that's the problem right now.
Saying, yeah, we can't discuss personnel issues. Personnel issues?
Yes.
We don't need as many people working.
Just a, just a, one second.
Okay, you're right. You got one more man left, I just have to. Okay. Guys, again, the recap, I'm sorry, it's a little loud. A little bit shocked at how fast this went down. For me, I've only been here for the last two meetings, you're right, but I just saw quarter million dollars disappear in a matter of seconds. I think we can do better than that. I'll end with that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to make a public comment on gender handles? Please state your name, address, authority.
Alan Burns, Twenty-Eight Top Drive.
I'd like to agree with this gentleman here. Joan disagreed with adding supervisors to, supervisors to the payroll, but she voted yes for it, so I have conflict with that. But then you guys went back and talked about transportation, that we can't give kids transportation, but we can give more jobs. What burden is that on kids and stuff, you know, getting them to school and stuff? So I kind of think you guys should have revisited that a little bit. That just doesn't make sense to me. I think kids need to get to school, I think parents, I think parents are being taxed too much, I think, I think parents are being taxed too much. I think there is, you know, the stress of getting them to school and all that stuff and we just, we keep, we're giving, we're supervising our decisions and I hate to say Joan, you were right, but you voted for it, so I have a problem with that. You know, and I agree with this gentleman here, why are we adding more jobs to the payroll when we should be giving kids transportation?
So I'm sorry, just, are you speaking for the board?
No, I'm speaking as a taxpayer in Middletown. I've been in Twenty-Eight Top Drive and revenue and, and, and this section and we have a board member that disagrees with it, we have a couple more members disagree with it, and we're adding more jobs, but I don't think we need to do that at the moment. If anything, if the future is raised, why are we adding more supervisor positions? And give a raise and give a raise and give transportation, but let's add more supervisors. We need that, that means it's going up.
Can I answer for my group?
Sure.
I voted, I could have voted no for the budget, but we need every dollar we can because of all the state aid. But I don't want anything else to come from the budget, but I'm not done arguing that I don't want those supervisors in. The vote, the supervisors, from what I'm told, are not second-stopping the budget.
Well, how can you vote if you're, you're convinced, but you're convinced?
Because I don't, I don't want to take any money away from our kids. I'm hoping that it will be. Listen, we're working on the transportation, but as far as the budget goes, if I vote no and five other people vote no, then the kids lose out. I will not let the kids lose out. I will fight for my beliefs at every single meeting, which I do, when it comes to meetings, you will know. I am very outspoken.
Because I trust the board, I have been in meetings, but I'm willing to come to meetings, so I'm willing to get involved. There's a lot of stuff on the board right now that I as a taxpayer are not happy with. So I'll be here, and if you want to be here, I'll be here and I'll, I'll put my purse behind it, but you have to stand and your standing is not right. You, you're a desk, you're a desk man, you're a desk manager, but then all of a sudden you turn around and you vote for it. Why are you doing that?
That's your opinion, you might not understand the budget process.
Okay, listen, can I jump in now and just remind, can I just remind the public that all comments should be addressed to the presiding officer? It's not a back and forth with any individual board member. So I, I, she was responding to your question, but then turned into a conversation between, okay, thank, thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to make a public comment on gender handles?
I'm sorry, I have a comment. I just want to clarify that all we voted on the budget, we did not vote for our reorganization chart, so that vote is still pending. That clears up any confusion on, the money is one issue, but the reorganization chart is a second issue, we have not voted on that yet. And the second comment I'd like to make is that we are, we expect to have the bus route protocol on the agenda for voting at the next meeting.
Yeah, the said, I'm going to go to the bottom. Did you have one that came up before you could go again?
Hi, I'm Joe Fratello, Mr. Sodi. On the agenda, I call for interrogation today. I can't speak well, public, so I just throw a quick thing that if I can read it.
Sure.
Good evening, everyone. If I could speak on my behalf, my name is Joey Fratello, I've been an employee for the event for thirteen years. If you're asking, school principal, staff, I'm a hard worker. I always give one hundred to ten percent and received support staff for the year for two thousand nineteen and twenty twenty. I would first like to say I'm sorry, I've been out a lot this past year. I've had medical conditions and I've been in and out of hospitals and I've been under my doctor's care. I've given my doctor's notes, hospital notes for every day. I've given my doctor's notes, hospital notes for every day that I was out. I'm sorry if I didn't follow procedure and was unable to. I didn't call my supervisors for a couple of days and my wife still called and in for me. I was too sick. They said she couldn't make the call for me and I was unable to do it myself. I don't think I should be fired because of illness. I am one, I'm not an employee of a 512 person. My wife and my daughter are disabled and relying on me. We need the health coverage and a financial... Financials. We will lose out the house and everything I have built and worked on, so harmful. Just remember, my life is in your hands before you vote today. And I work here and I love my job because I hope to help people. And if I ask anything in turn, but I'm asking for your help. And please, think hard before you vote. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I would like to hear your comment, and the board doesn't discuss personnel matters, so I don't think they were ignoring your comment by not responding, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else I can make a public comment on gender handles? So you know, I'm the microphone, public motion for comment. Couple of proclamations, Administrative Professionals Day tomorrow, National School Principal Day, May 1st, National Teachers Appreciation Day, May 2nd, and School Nurse Day, May 10th. And a motion to approve Executive Session 32823 in the workshop room, voting in 32823.
So what's the second?
All in favor? Both abstentions. Just again, it's my report right now, just to let everybody know, I'd like to make a vote that and it's been said, the board of comment, of the crowd, will be reinstated for next year. And on the agenda for next month will be the rest of the district's rats. Okay? And I will say on my personal behalf, I am all for keeping the rat. Definitely because I do believe that children should have a way to exist. Just a couple of days of recognition, which I just went through, I want to say again, 4/26 tomorrow, Administrative Professionals Day, May 1st, National School Principal Day, May 2nd, National Teachers Appreciation Day, and May 10th, School Nurse Day. Thank you all for everything that you do each and every day, appreciate it. Moving on to the Board Secretary's monthly certification.
We have certification that we're still into New Jersey Amendment Code. I as the Board Secretary certified as March 31st. We know why they have these new conferences and expenditures, which is going to see the line of interpretation.
Thank you, Amy. And a motion to approve C1 through D1. C1 approved. All right, C1 or C3?
So, second.
Discussion? All in favor? Both abstentions. And a motion to approve D2 minus numbers 403, 527, and 155. Discussion? All in favor? Both?
I'm a guess on all except two for 127.
Abstentions. And a motion to confirm D2, 403, 527, and 155.
So, second.
And we have a roll call on each one of them.
Can we have a discussion?
Yes.
I just want to say, I always vote no on hits. We never really get the full picture, but tonight we have a full picture on three. And we got more information and backed up the decisions. So my vote will probably be changed by now.
And a roll call on 403 first.
Mrs. Cavendish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havermon? I couldn't hear that. Okay. Mrs. Minnies?
Yes.
Mr. Tull?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Roll call on 527.
Mrs. Cavendish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Havermon?
Same.
Mrs. Minnies?
No.
Mr. Tull?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
A roll call on 155.
Mrs. Cavendish?
Yes.
Mrs. Farley?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
No.
Mr. Havermon?
Same.
Mrs. Minnies?
Yes.
Mr. Tull?
No.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Tobacco?
Yes.
Mr. Capone?
Yes.
Motion to approve D3 through 5.
So.
Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both abstentions. Motion to approve 15B1 through F4. Second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both abstentions. And that was including, I have a motion to approve, number four. 14B2, addendum, motion to approve. Yes.
You did...
I can't hear you.
You did through four, right? Do you want to do the search?
I did B1 through F4 just now. Now, we have the addendum, which is 15B2.
We're at F5.
F5, not yet.
Oh.
Right. So a motion to approve addendum 15B2. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both abstentions. Now, a motion to approve 15F5 through G1. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Both abstentions. A motion to approve items 1 through 15 on person. Motion on the floor to approve items 1250 on person.
No, we need a motion and second, I mean.
Second? Discussion?
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
So.
A motion and second. Second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Both?
I'm opposed on number eight. I am too. I am as well. So, huh.
So, so, Mrs. Wright and Mrs. Minnies?
Yes.
I...
No name.
I want to change my vote. Yes. I have any. Do you want to have a brief break and talk about it?
I'll, I'll just give you one.
Yes. Yes. Can I have my discussion?
I also came below me.
Yes, I as well. I want a note to remember.
So roll in that four and O for number eight.
Yes, same here.
Moving on to...
I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. So note for number eight is Mrs. Tobacco, Mrs. Farley, Mrs. Wright, Mrs. Minnies, Mr. Havermon, Mr. Tull, and Mr. Fitzgerald.
I think it was everybody.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's difficult for me to hear because if you're not talking to the mic.
Yeah, I, I think it was everybody. Sorry, confused everyone. Moving on to whole business, before we get to whole business. Kalida, Liam, Mike, having to say that, or...
Sure.
Both, yeah, both air force.
Good evening. Hi, I just wanted to say that one thing that I brought up in the last meeting was on suicide prevention awareness law happening on May 21st. So I just wanted to bring that back up and give a little update. So as it comes closer, we have some live bands, some student performances will be happening on that day, food trucks, it should be a good community event. On Sunday, actually, we're going to 21 different towns, traveling all the county to to hang up flags and kind of talk about it so that we get good community acting and good response. So I just want to keep that on everyone's mind.
Yeah, you have to talk on that.
I look, yeah, so it's Sunday, May 21st, and I believe we're going to be starting, I think around 9:00 AM, and it's going to start at the art center and go to the town hall.
You already do that, just want to say that right now.
We have to wait until it's signed up.
Okay, yeah, so as the day gets closer, we're going to be having like t-shirt sales and signups and stuff like that. So I'll definitely keep you updated at the next meeting.
Thank you so much. Liam, would you like to say? All right, now, going to whole business, anyone for whole business?
Yes. I have a few reminders. This week is New Momma's Hip Dogship. It's going to be held at St. Mary's. If anybody is interested, I'm not sure if it's closed out yet, but I would contact New Momma's school. Bay Shore Hip Dogship's May 5th. If you're interested, please contact bayshorehipdogship@gmail.com. I did all these last, last meeting too. May 38th, we're having a classic car show. It's an all-day event. We hope everybody comes out. It's going to be entertaining. The board and, and other members are going to be eating a choice of their car. So I hope that we get there so that we can do our orders. The event is going to be a wonderful event, yeah. And the other thing is the art fusion. That's tomorrow night, or the 5:30 to 7:30 here at Aspen Court. If you don't go, you're going to be missing a great expedition up there. These kids do great work. And, what else? Oh, and this Saturday, their eighth grade car parts from Bay Shore Medical School. April 29th, 9:02. Raining day is April 30th. It's going to be held at the Wayne Arter, Firehouse, 85, Appleton, Navin. So if everybody gets a chance to go and support our students, I would really appreciate it.
That's it, John?
That's it, Bernie?
Thank you. Does anyone else have whole business? Or it turns to new business, you don't know?
Yes.
I think I pretty much knew this about you. Yes. Okay, now to open up my phone for public comments. Please state your name, name addressed to the record. We've got time, it's three minutes over. See, no one coming to the microphone, I'm going to close the public comment. And motion to adjourn. I'm sorry? We just made a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
No, for that guy, give him a chance, man, look at him.
I'm sorry. Sir, can you state your name if you're going to make a comment? Thank you.
Mallory, Todd Drive, 28 Todd Drive. Give this guy a chance, man, he can go far.
Sir, the board voted not for it.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? Both abstentions. Have a good night, everyone.